People, I like to see lots of familiar faces. The board went into executive session at 5:30 at the motion of Mr. Forston and the second of Mr. Abrams to discuss legal and personnel matters. We're going to start this meeting the way we start all of our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join me.
My Pledge of Allegiance.
I, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to mention that our fellow board member, Nichelle DeWitt, is joining us via Zoom. She is unwell and unable to be here tonight. Dr. Burrows, are there any adjustments to the board agenda?
Under item seven, letter D, strategic plan goal five update was tabled until January.
Anything else?
And then we are going under item five. We're going to flip-flop item C and B. Just for, because we have quite a number, the room temperature from all the bodies, we want to...
Okay. So if you've seen the agenda, we have a lot of special recognitions. No delegations, some reports, some board comments, old business, new business, and then personnel matters to address. And then we'll move on to an establishment of meeting dates and then adjournment. But we're going to do my favorite part, special recognitions, right now. And we're going to start with recognizing the Delaware Marching Band Championships.
Good evening, I am Laura Sebastiano. I'm the proud arts specialist for the district. In our district, we are fortunate to have three incredibly hard-working high school band directors. Brian Enline, Ryan Mosley, and Chris Parks spend countless hours preparing their groups for performances and for competitions. Anyone who lives near one of our stadiums knows just how hard and how long these directors and their students work. The marching bands participate in multiple competitions throughout the fall, several of which are hosted by our schools. If you have never had the opportunity to attend one of those, I would very much recommend that you do. They are a spectacular display of musical and technical expertise. Our three marching bands all earned awards this season that are very deserving of recognition. But before the students and their directors share more about those awards, I wanted to just take a moment to celebrate the incredible dedication of our three directors, Mr. Enline, Mr. Mosley, and Mr. Parks. So I will now hand the mic over to Applequinn High School Marching Band.
So we have quite a large contingent here with us. I'm actually going to have them stand up in the back. These are our student leaders, section leaders from the Applequinn Marching Band that came out here this evening to also kind of share in this award. Up here with me is Samantha Ely. She is our senior drum major. She'll be saying a couple of words. But again, we want to thank the district, the Board of Education, and even the town and community for all your support of our programs and the growth of our programs over the course of the season. We, as it was said, we can be a little loud at times for rehearsals and practices. But it is all for a good cause, to really promote Applequinn School District and give these students the best opportunities that they can have to grow as musicians and even kind of prepare them for going on into collegiate or independent marching activities as well. So just a couple of notes here on the marching season is our senior drum major, Samantha Ely.
Hi, I was not told that I was going to be speaking, so please bear with me as I wing it. I just want to thank the board, like he said, the community for the support and all the help that they have given us. It means so much. I know all the section leaders and all our band people here know, even the FFA, that this is like such a family community and it really gives you a sense of purpose and just something fun to do. And that would not be possible without all the help of the board, so thank you so much.
Next we have Middletown High School, Mr. Parks.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Julia Ivory and I'm one of the drum majors for Middletown High School's marching band. I'm here with my co-drum major, Jason Byrne, and band director, Mr. Parks. The Middletown High School marching band has a successful competitive marching band season this year with our production, I Wish. We competed in the Tournament of Band Circuit in the Group Two Open Division. We finished in first place in the Region I Championships, which includes all of Delaware and Eastern Maryland, and also won first place in the first-ever TOB Delaware State Championships with a season high of 88.9, winning high auxiliary and percussion. We also got to support our football team as they made it all the way to the semifinals and participate in other Middleton events such as the Peach Festival and Townsend Elementary Halloween Parade. I'd like to thank the other student leaders in the band for their support and friendship this past season. Braden Reynolds, Kai Woods, Shayna Isaac, Daniel Denight, Lily Wilbank, Shelby Lee, and junior drum major, Jason Byrne, who I'm really excited to hand over the reins to next season. I know the band is in good hands. I'd like to thank Mr. Hildick and the band boosters for their help keeping our program running. And I also like to thank Mr. Parks, Madette Nity, MJ Harris, Jared Sloto, Rob Wilbank, and the rest of the staff for their guidance and support throughout the season. Lastly, I'd like to thank Dr. Burrows, Ms. Wall, Dr. Conley, and the rest of the board for having us here tonight and making our program possible. Thank you so much, and go Cavaliers!
And next, the Odessa Marching Band, Mr. Enline.
Sorry, Dr. Burrows, as I trip over Dr. Burrows. I just wanted to introduce three of our section leaders this evening, representing the entire Odessa High Marching Band. Our drum major, Ms. Ruby Wall, one of our color guard, or our only color guard section leader, excuse me, Olivia Dow. And we also have our front ensemble, also known as the PIT, section leader, Ms. Emma Sykes. And to tell you a little bit about our program is going to be Ruby, but I just wanted to say, because I have the opportunity, Mr. Billings is out here. Mr. Billings, what we're able to do at Odessa High School doesn't happen without incredible cooperation amongst teachers. And I have to thank Mr. Billings, because you'll notice a young lady in an FFA jacket this evening, Ms. Chloe Myers, who's actually one of our trumpet section leaders. He was able to share this student with us. She was able to do FFA Grand National event and still make it back for the championship event that we were performing in. So I just wanted to thank Mr. Billings for all his effort and the very early morning text message to let me know that she was on her way home safely. So without further ado, Ms. Ruby Wall.
First, on behalf of the Odessa High School marching band, I just wanted to thank the board for recognizing us today at today's meeting. And marching band has really brought all the students at Odessa here together and made a brand-new family and even built us a brand-new home, just like our show. Thank you.
We're going to move on in the recognitions to FFA, and we're going to start with the recognitions of Meredith Middle School first, Ms. Timpson.
Good evening, my name is Ms. Kottas and I am now the, one of the Odessa FFA advisors, but I did get the joyous privilege of working with some of our Meredith Middle students and having them represent the Delaware FFA Association at the National FFA Convention in the Leadership Development Event of Conduct of Chapter Meetings. So this, this event is where our students will demonstrate their knowledge of parliamentary procedure and running a business meeting, and they also perform the opening cleric-closing ceremonies of the National FFA. So our members this year, they are a bronze team, and they are Temple Lewis, Mira Stacks, Olivia Orndorff, and Melissa Yubowa. And those members that are not, not here this evening are Delilah Schilling, Nimrit Mon, and Alex Muniz.
Congratulations, I'm going to give these to you to pass out.
Hello, I'm Brandy Timpson, I'm one of the ag teachers at Applequinn High School. I want to say how proud I am to be one of the ag teachers here in Applequinn High School District. Just to give you a little overview, between the three high schools, we had students competing in every aspect of agri-science. All three pathways that we offer. Plant science included floriculture and landscaping. Natural resources included environmental and forestry. Animal science, we had vet science, meat evaluation, and dairy handling. And then we also threw in food science, ag sales, and public speaking. So we really kind of, as a district, kind of represented a little bit of everything. And our district, between the three high schools, were over a third of the teams representing Delaware. So that's a pretty big deal that I think, between the three high schools, we're pretty awesome. So now, for my teams, sorry, there's four teams. So a few of our members couldn't be here. They are actually in college and they had exams this week, so excuse a few of us not being here tonight. So we had a vet science team, which received gold team. We had a gold individual Savannah Royal Parks. Silver individuals Vivian Carter, Ryan Franco, and Cameron Smith. Our silver ag sales team, silver individual Kaylee Weiner, Elizabeth Mollengrath, and J.C. Wiley, and bronze individual Edwina Chen. In floriculture, silver team consisted of gold individuals Keely McCormick and Erin Kosminski. Silver individual Tara Wingate and bronze individual Drew Satterfield. Our meats evaluation team, which they're all in college, so they're not here. Bronze team consisting of Haley Drysdale, Sydney Spence, Kyle Gares, and Anna Holloway. Our bronze agri-science fair in social systems, Alana Christman. And last but certainly not least, we had our first American degree in quite a while, Ms. Jessie Schweiger. I'd now like to turn the mic over to Ms. Bryn Bailey from Middletown.
All right, guys, I'll keep things moving here. So my name is Bryn Bailey. I'm one of two agri-science teachers at Middletown High School. This year, we traveled with a group of nine current students and two alumni. I'll list the students that couldn't make it here tonight first, and then I'll get into the group that is here. So we did have two American degree recipients. They graduated in 2020, Kaya Clot Speaker and Alyssa Diudow. We also had a dairy handler, Jacob Green. He was silver. We had a food science team that was a bronze team, which was Natalia Alvini-Moore, Laney Hastings, Ari Peters. And I know I'm forgetting the fourth one, that's my fourth one. It'll come to me, Anya, Anya Chichinsky, thank you, save, appreciate you. And then the team that is here, I have two students who are here tonight and who that couldn't, two that couldn't join us. They were a silver team, which was the nursery and landscape team. We had a gold individual in Sophia Torres. And then we had three silver individuals, Reese Albany, Adriana Mazio, and Wesley Harkins. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Billings next.
All right, we'll keep moving. As Ms. Bailey said, I am Mr. Billings. I'm one of the agri-science teachers at Odessa High School this year. And we'll break it up a little bit. So Ms. Timpson alluded a little bit, in the world of agri-science, we have two different types of competitions. Either leadership development events or career development events. So for people who are not familiar with it, we just kind of focus backwards. So leadership development event is an event that develops leadership characteristics. We had two individuals participate in creed speaking and extemp. Both of those won the state event back in March and were able to represent the state of Delaware at the national convention in Indianapolis. So Kalina Diaz participated in creed speaking, and Ella Vandervort was in extemporaneous public speaking. And I asked my students to talk a little bit about what that contest is, 30 seconds or less, so nothing crazy. But a lot of times, people don't understand what that means. So we say creed speaking, what is that? So, Kalina?
So first, I recite the FFA creed, which is kind of like a five-paragraph essay that goes into basically the morals of what our culture as an FFA members believe in. For each FFA member, this has meant something else. For me, I competed in this over the course of my eighth grade and ninth grade year, and the FFA creed was constantly meaning something different. After I recited the FFA creed, I then answered three questions that related to the creed, and I had to tie it into the world of our culture. And I was kind of, I was judged based off of my pace, my tonality, and how I really was on the stage as an FFA member in reciting the FFA creed. Thank you.
So I competed in extemporaneous public speaking, which is where you were given 12 topics and you pick three, and then out of those three, you pick one. And then you have 30 minutes to write a four-to-six-minute speech, and then you were asked questions on that four-to-six-minute speech. So yeah, it's a fun one, it's definitely...
We'll move on to career development events. We'll recognize our environmental science team. They were a silver team in the nation, and we had Bruce McCauley, well, you got to come up at the same time, Taylor Mahoney, Natalie Holdren, and Caitlin DeRozier. So, you want to talk about what we did for them?
Environmental Science and Natural Resources, CDU, allowed students to gain more knowledge on soil, water, and air quality.
In our competition, we were asked to practice things like data interpretation, and we used measurement tools that had to do with real-life environmental threats in hopes of scoring highest individually and as a team.
Throughout the competition, especially competing on the national level, we were met with several different weather types, which is exactly how professional working in the environmental natural resource industry would have. We also competed to show how proficient we were in different subjects such as data interpretation, GPS navigation, water quality management, soil sciences, and wildlife conservation.
And lastly, in the team activity, we produced written statements through an oral presentation about urban development and wildfire management via written statements and identification activities.
And then we'll move over to forestry. We had Anne Stewart-Wall, Marco Lucia, Jackson Wills, and Marissa Wolf could not attend, but here's an explanation.
So forestry falls under the career development event, and we were tasked with doing things that foresters would have to do in everyday life. We were tasked, we were sent into the forest in Indiana, and we were there from about eight o'clock in the morning to six o'clock at night. For the team activity, we were sent and we had to do problem-solving with numbers and math and counting timber and things like that. But for the individual practicum, we had to identify disorders, identify trees, and many other things. But that's pretty much it, it was very exciting. I got a hard hat!
And they fell down a hill, so... And they're all challenging, but my, my last team to recognize is agronomic crops. And as a student who participated in this myself in high school and now have coached this team, it's really rigorous, so I'm going to get them to pass out when they recall their memories of this event. So we had Emilio Orndorff and Chloe Myers. Both of them did exceptional. This is one of the contests on a national level that students can earn industry certification, and they have to score a certain percentage. And only 11 students in the entire contest obtained that. And Chloe was the next one in line to get that certification. So it's a very rigorous knowledge-based test, but I'm very proud of them.
So individually, we did a written test, and we identified crops, weeds, seeds, and insects.
There was also a team part of this competition, and we were asked to evaluate crop agronomic situations and develop a crop management plan, which consisted of crop production, problem-solving, and marketing. It was really fun. It's very hard to do, but it was really fun.
And just on behalf of all the agri-science teachers here in the district, one, thank you to the board and community members for giving us the opportunity. As teachers, we're always working tirelessly for our students, but we don't ever really get the opportunity to put them in front of the community and speak on behalf of what they do. So thank you for giving them that time and this recognition, so thank you.
I'm going to let the room settle for a second. Moving on in our recognitions, we're going to move to item B, the Yale National Training Awards, Ms. Kamak.
Good evening, my name is Yvonne Kamak and I'm coordinator of school health and lead nurse. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Tamsin Levnov from Holcombe Behavioral Health. She is a prevention coordinator and also a member of the Southern Newcastle County Communities Coalition and the Yale Group, Youth to Eliminate Loss of Life. The SNC4, or Southern Newcastle County Coalition, has been working with our district and our students for many years in the area of prevention, substance use and misuse, and also risky behaviors. The students with the Yale Group do a phenomenal job. They are student leaders, and Tamsin is here tonight to recognize them for some of their wonderful leader accomplishments.
Thanks, Yvonne. We just came from our holiday sweater party, so we bore this just a bit. Good evening, my name's Tamsin Levnov. I'm the prevention coordinator, as Yvonne mentioned, on the Southern Newcastle County Communities Coalition, SN4C. And we help promote and support the Yale Clubs. And as she mentioned, Yale stands for Youth Eliminating Loss of Life. This is really important as it's a peer-led entity versus adults saying, you know, no, 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 drugs are bad. We realize that youth-led, adult-guided model is best. So super excited to bring up youth from three of the high schools, or all three high schools, rather, in the district. Julia Ivory, Emmanuel Apong, Destiny Heim, who can't be with us here tonight, Aria Patel, and Brianna Sherman-Blanding, if you guys could join us, along with their facilitators, Laurie Lace from Middletown High School and Mr. Stephen Capelli from Odessa High School, if you guys could all join me up here. And a big round of applause for all of these folks. And you'll hear why, so you gave them a round of applause. Now I'm going to tell you why they just threw a round of applause. So they all took time out of their summer to attend a national conference called CADCA. CADCA stands for the Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America. We have a lot of acronyms to keep it straight. And these five young people and the two facilitators took time out of their summer to go to a training in Orlando, not the worst place to have to go. However, they got to Disney just for a couple hours on one day and spent four full days in training, learning about the best practices in how to promote healthy decision-making from a peer standpoint. And we really are super, super honored to be able to recognize them. Ultimately, as you all know, with a lot of these clubs, this is not a requirement. This is an extracurricular activity that they choose to be in to help better their community and change the culture around, making sure that healthy choices are the most popular and cool choice to make. Their most significant impact was in their attendance.
I think it was so amazing going to Florida over the summer and being with a group of youth, all with the common stance that we all want to prevent youth vaping and smoking in our communities and in our schools. So I think it was a great way to meet so many new people that we all share the common, you know, idea and values.
Yeah, sort of what Julia was saying. It's one to have like an adult tell you, no, drugs are bad, you can't do that, but to really see the impact and what it actually does for people, and then go on to your friends and other youth your age and really spread that same message, but actually get to them is a really beautiful thing we got to learn how to do.
Adding on to what they said, it's also very eye-opening to see how complicated the matters of substance abuse are and how environments and cultures play, put a large play into this. And through this, we also work through solutions and narrow it down to a singular topic with lots of details that took us four days to actually plan out.
To add on to what my fellow colleague said, it was a very nice experience, like going out to meet a whole bunch of people from other countries, learning about how we can help our community. It was great for me, and I hope each and every one of you can join us next time, and it will be, it will be very awesome to see every one of you trying to help your community too. Thank you.
Thank you.
And moving on in the agenda, middle school fall sports championships. Terry Taylor. Or maybe Dr. Burrows? Dr. Burrows?
Good evening. I'm Lynn Streets. I'm the principal at Kent Wells Bridge Middle School. I didn't want to have to have Dr. Burrows on the spot for this, but we are very proud of our field hockey team from this year. It's the first-ever field hockey team in the middle schools. We want to definitely thank the board for allowing us to have middle school sports. It's nothing like a good, close game and a championship to really increase the school spirit within our schools, and it's something that I know is going to be monumental for these girls moving forward, so thank you for that. So we have a great group of girls here. It came down to a really exciting game. We actually had a goalie who had never had a shot taken on her the entire season, and it actually came down to penalty shots, right? That's what I call it. Okay, just checking. Came down to penalty shots, and we came out with the win against Meredith. So we're really proud of this group of girls. They carried themselves with integrity and really came together as a team, so we're proud of them. Do you want to say the names or you want me to? Okay. So this is Brooklyn Dobbs, one of our coaches here tonight, and she'll call up your names, and girls, you can come up, okay?
All right, I want to start with those that are here, and then we'll list the girls that couldn't make it tonight. So we have Lydia Carroll, Sam Slattery, Ally Taylor, Pia Modi, Alyssa Timmons, Dia Patel, Addison Barker, Caroline Perry, Bailey Hennessy, Ava, and Kira Callahan. All right, and those that are not here, we have Brenna Jester, Naomi Fileta, Sienna Bateman, Alicia, Alicia, sorry, money, Ava, Ellie Parag, Aubrey Martin, Mia McCurdy, Kate, Brooke Decker, Barzy, that's what we call her, sorry, I'm used to yelling one name on the field, so Bella, and then Evelyn Wessel. All right, ladies, bring it around.
You guys can come in. Any cross-country runners? Where is this? It's part of the holiday weight loss program. Like, I think we're just going to sweat it off in this room. Before we move on to the agenda, do we have any middle school cross-country runners here? All right, we will table that recognition.
All right, moving on in our agenda. That was great to be able to recognize all of those fantastic programs in our school district. Congratulations to all who could be here and those of you who couldn't join us as well. No delegations this evening, so moving on to reports. Dr. Burrows, superintendent's report.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to report that the heat is working very well in the boardroom and at the Marione Profit Center. So currently, our human resources has added 637 positions. We are currently up nine students from our September 30th count, which is much lower than we usually are at this point of the year, so I'm not sure if that, what that has to do with, but we're just up nine units, which is kind of nice for us to be able to catch up. I want to just give two updates, one being on school lunch. So for the past previous two years, the federal government supported schools with free lunch for all students. They did do away with that into this school year and are asking families to fill out free and reduced lunch forms and then to pay if you do not qualify for free or reduced lunch. We have run into an issue in the district, that being that we are seeing about $10,000 in charges a month for school lunches. If that was to continue throughout the school year, that'd be over $100,000 in school lunch charges. So in order to kind of address this problem, we are going back to a deli sandwich. Once a student has three charges, they will be offered a deli sandwich with the hot sides that are offered for the regular hot lunch. We did not want to do this, but we find it necessary because the school district didn't, did not budget, nor could we afford $100,000 in school lunch charges when we get to the end of the school year. So I wanted families to be aware of that. If you are a family that is struggling, you do not qualify for free and reduced lunch, we ask you to please reach out to your school. We will be more than willing to work with you. We do not want any student to go without food, but we also need to be good stewards of our money and make sure that students are paying for the lunch they are receiving. Also, if you have noticed the news, the last two days, there's been articles in the News Journal in regards to lead and lead levels in schools in the water. Seven years ago, we started to do independent testing as a district. We usually do that every spring break. We post that, all the results of our lead testing, on our district website. We are not one of the districts that has concern, fortunately. We were able to address any issues that we had seven years ago, and will continue to test and look at that. The state is going to do a program where they're going to test all schools in the state. They've contracted with a company. It's actually the company we already use for our own testing, so that's going to work out well. So they will be at some point in the next six months, testing every school in the state. We don't anticipate any problems, but we will keep you informed. As I said, the last test occurred for us last April. We tested all of our systems, and they were all in good shape. So any questions, feel free to reach out on that. I just didn't want our community to be concerned that they hadn't heard anything from us. We did put a communication up today in regards to that, and also a direct link to the results from previous testing. That's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just a question or observation, Dr. Burrows. To the extent that people do qualify for free and reduced lunch but haven't filled out the paperwork yet, isn't that just holding up us getting the money? Because we'll get reimbursed for the lunches that we've given to people who qualify, right?
That's correct. So, and they still can fill out the lunch forms, they still can fill out the free and reduced lunch forms, and if they need help filling those out, we're more than willing to help as well in doing that.
Well, my point is that if they do qualify, but they haven't filled it out yet, please do. And if, and then your other point is also well-taken, that, you know, if you don't technically qualify, but times are tough, we want to work with you, but we need people to fill out those forms.
Yes, thank you for reiterating that.
And you can also explain, like, when someone goes to buy an eighth-grade dance ticket and you discover you have...
Yeah, so there's some checks in the system for making sure that your lunch charges are paid. There's like different points where, for example, if you were going to go to the eighth grade formal, your lunch charges need to all be paid. If you plan on going to homecomings when you get to high school, that all needs to be paid, proms and so forth. So we don't want any family to be shocked at the end of the school year that you have $2,000 in lunch charges. And schools are communicating, so schools have communicated through letter, two families letting them know that there is a lunch, that there is a negative balance in your student's lunch account. I will admit, I received one of those letters. We owe 31 cents, so we have taken care of that, though.
And Dr. Burrows, is that going to be communicated at the school level to the families as well? Okay.
Yes.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Burrows? Hearing none, moving on in the agenda to Profile of a Graduate update. Mr. Hoover.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nick Hoover. I'm the Director of Secondary Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. I am here to introduce Hans Meter. We've been working with Hans and his company for over a year, right? Yeah, a year and a half or so, on what I think is probably some of the most exciting work that we're doing right now in our school district. I'm not going to steal any of Hans's thunder here, but we had a great discussion before, and when he talks about profile of a graduate, it connects to so many things that we're doing in our district. So excited to hear from his report tonight. Hans Meter.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you very much. My name is Hans Meter, and I am with U-Scienc, previously with the National Center for College and Career Transitions. We recently merged with U-Scienc. So I usually am holding my own clicker, so I'll just give you a head click, and you can move forward. But the thing, it was so good to see all the students tonight and thinking about the work you're doing here in Appuiqunamink to prepare students for their future. And that's what the Profile of a Graduate project is all about, clarifying how we want our students to be ready for that next phase of life. So please advance the slide. Tell you a little bit about my background, then we'll talk about the project overview, the project benefits, what we've done so far, and where we're heading next. Go ahead. Thanks. My background, prior to doing this work with U-Scienc and with the National Center for College and Career Transitions, was at the U.S. Department of Education, the Office of Vocational Technical Education, and then for the last 20 years have been doing this kind of work of supporting school districts and improving education for their young adults and their teenagers. And in this project, our project lead is Tamara Fields. Tamara is based in Florida. I'm based in Columbia, Maryland, so I wanted to be here in person. It's a little easier for me to get here. But Tamara has been doing the day-to-day project lead on this work. So a profile of a graduate is a tool, both graphical and written, that summarizes the aspirations of a community for their high school graduates. It sounds kind of common sense, but it is a process for getting clarity about not only academic skills, but all the knowledge and competencies we want for our students to have to move forward in their lives. And what it expresses are knowledge, skills, abilities, mindsets that make the individual ready for their next step in life beyond high school. Go ahead. And we're asking, go ahead and click again. It's all based around a very simple but important question. Should be able to click one more time. What are the attributes of someone who is ready for these next steps? Go ahead. So there's three benefits that creating the profile gives a school district and the community. One is that it does clarify that the mission of education is not only to develop academic competencies, but really to help develop the full range of competencies that a person needs to be ready for their future. Secondly, it strengthens the connection between education and the community and getting clarity. And this has often been a problem. It's certainly not a problem here in Appuiqunamink because you have very strong community engagement. But making sure that the community understands what's happening inside the school system and getting clarity about the work of education, and then also uniting educators at different grade levels, so that the second grade, my wife is a second grade teacher, her job is not just to prepare a student to go to third grade, but really to be building the knowledge and skills that will ultimately lead that young person across the graduation stage with the knowledge and skills that they need. So it helps educators across the range of the system understand how what they're doing contributes to the future for each child. So there's very close alignment. This is, this is part of implementing the Five-Year Strategic Plan Vision 2026. I won't speak for the leaders of the school district, but I know that that's been something that we, in our work with the school district, have been very cognizant of, that this is part of rolling... part of rolling out your strategic plan. And particularly equity and opportunity for every student and engaging students with relevant learning. Go ahead. So this is a template, I'm sorry, just go ahead and click through, there'll be three clicks here. So there's three phases to this. It's a, overall, we'll be working with the school district over a three-year period, but right now, we are just in phase one of creating and communicating the profile. The second phase will then be helping identify what the district is doing to contribute to the profile, and if there are any gaps, identifying those gaps, and then helping ensure that those gaps are filled in the curriculum and the student experience throughout grades one through 12. And then we'll focus on measuring attainment and recognizing progress. So we have an internal team that has been guiding the work. You have all the members here and many of them are in the room tonight. And then what we've done so far, we had a very successful and exciting event in March of 2022 with about 45 individuals from both within the school system and the community. That's called the Steering Committee. And then we've had a number of focus groups held virtually to get more input on what this graduate profile looks like. And then we've taken it back to that community-based steering committee a couple of different times. And I'll show you the draft profile that we have right now. You can go through one more time. So, and then we'll zoom in very quickly on each area. We have six broad areas of, of competencies, knowledge and skills. So we click forward and we see that there's an academic readiness. And for each of these, we have a short, simple statement, and then we have some background information that will be, that we're creating that explains in a little more detail, thinking and working, excuse me, thinking and innovating creatively, critically, calculating with fluency. So we're not going to ask you to give comments on this right now, although there is going to be a comment period opening up very shortly. So just click through the next six, please. So we have workplace readiness, a set of competencies around that, future focused. And each of these are based on the input that we received at the Steering Committee and then the input that we received in the focus groups. So there's been kind of a learning process in identifying what, what everyone together collectively feels are the most important competencies and attributes to, to identify. Okay, thank you. You can go forward. So the next steps, we're doing the update tonight. Happy to entertain any questions you have. The cabinet within the district met earlier today, I met with the superintendent earlier today as well. And then we are opening up a survey for the, then go to the next slide, please. Opening up a survey that will be available to anyone in the community to give further input and feedback on the profile of a graduate. We know that getting extensive community feedback and input is a really important part of this process. So that will open up shortly. It'll, it'll close the second week of January, and then we'll be ready to have a, a final version of the profile that will then be brought to the, I'm not exactly sure, the, the final process of how that will be adopted, but it'll be finalized, we'll be asking for community adoption, and then we will start to move into that next, the second phase and the third phase. So I think that is where we are. Happy to entertain any questions you have and, or ask for any comments for those of you, some of you have been participating directly in the process.
Can you speak, or maybe Dr. Vary, how this tool, when it's completed, is going to help us in the schools?
Well, one thing it's going to do is identify, you know, areas of strength, but then also areas of weakness. The, the final product that Hans is referring to will be all of the areas in a front-facing web version, and you'll be able to click on each of the areas to drill down to exactly what we provide as a school system to do what it, what it says we're doing. And then a, a second click will take you down into our measurements to make sure that we're measuring the progress towards the goals that we set on a portrait. One thing that Hans's team has been able to do in all their data collection and community input so far, and the survey I do believe goes out tomorrow for even broader input, is, is been able to collect everything that we do well already, our workforce readiness, curriculum, our work-based learning credits that our students earn, all of our pathways. And so that, what you see as a draft, is a lot of what we, we know we do. It's just kind of putting that together in kind of a unified vision for the school district, so that we're really, really uber-focused on, this is what we want our students to have and be able to do when they leave our system.
I think one, the, probably the biggest benefit will be intuitively, when you look at the profile that we drafted and that will be finalized, it, it kind of reflects of what we want for our children, but by being more clear about it, it'll provide the opportunity to make sure that students aren't falling through the gaps and that every student is getting that full range of what they need to be successful beyond, beyond high school.
Are there any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Moving on in the agenda, the next item is the School Year 2023-24 Calendar Committee, Dr. Feathers, Mr. Hoover.
Good evening again. I am, I'm here to present our 2023-2024 calendar proposal. The, the very first thing I, I want to do is, Steve, you can go first. What's that? Okay. So, are you saying it's on? Are we good? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, all right. First thing I wanted to do was recognize our committee members. At our last meeting, Mr. Abrams, you know, mentioned that, you know, it, it does take time and, and effort to show up to these committees and, and, and provide feedback and really try to, in this case, for, for a calendar, really try to create the best calendar that we possibly can. So, we had a lot of people over our several meetings that took the time to do that, so, and, and we have a few more meetings that will be coming up. Just so everybody knows, we've met in November, we've met in December, we're presenting the calendar here tonight. We'll be eventually collecting some feedback. Our committee will meet again in January, present again, collect more feedback, we'll meet again in February, and then we'll do our final presentation. So, the, the committee is, is in it for several months, so we do appreciate all of their, their efforts. The first thing I think that's really important, or the second thing, I guess, is talking about our guiding values. Whenever you're, you're leading a group of people, specifically here around the calendar, I think that we, we must have guiding values. And in some cases, I might just post this up there, but I do think it's important that I go through these, because as we're making decisions, they're, they're tough decisions sometimes, right? Sometimes people have great ideas, but we can't do all of our, or, all of our ideas. And sometimes we have to look at these guiding values to really help support that. So, we value lifelong learning for staff, we value instructional time for consistency, we value maintaining an equitable distribution of instructional time, we value parent engagement conferences for progress monitoring, we value time for families, we value the negotiated agreement, we value every employee category, and we do what's best for students. And I think that's really important, that we all get reminded that often. So we're going to jump into the calendar. I'm not going to talk about every single date here, but I do want to highlight a few in, in each month. We're going to start with, with August. We see here that what we're proposing is that our new teachers begin on August 21st, and all of our staff would show up for opening day on August 28th. Move to September. September, we see, we have Labor Day off and we'll start right after that. So on the fifth, you see our first day of school for students grades one through nine and half of our kindergarten. On the sixth, we have first day of students for grades 10 through 12, the other half of our kindergarten. And on the seventh is our first day of school for pre-K, and that means that's the first day of school all the way for all of our students.
I just have a question. While we're on that, do we have feedback of how that went, since it was our first time that we tried it that way?
We did. So our schools loved it. We got great feedback from our teachers and the administrators, that it was a much smoother start to the school year. And we got decent feedback from parents, too. So we didn't have a lot of concerns. Kids came on the right day, which was nice. So they asked to continue with it. It had, it did go really well.
Okay. I was just curious, since it was the first time that we had done it that way. Thank you.
Okay, looking ahead to October, there's a couple of things that I want to highlight here in, in October. Typically, our state does a State Professional Development Day. As of right now, we do not have what that date is. However, we kind of penciled in two different dates. It's usually the first or second Friday of the month, so right now, we have them penciled in. I do want to highlight that we will not have both of those days off. Right now, we're just penciled in for one of those days. That will be a State Professional Development Day and all students will be off on that, that day. I believe we're supposed to find that date by the end of this month, so by January, we should have something more solidified there. On October 9th, Indigenous, Indigenous Peoples' Day, so that will be a professional learning day for our staff. And you're going to see a bit of a theme through this. We have not gotten the dates from College Board for PSATs, SATs, and our AP exams. So right now, we have some, some asterisks out there for those dates. Some of them are penciled in. The PSAT date is typically around that 11th date, so that's why we have that, that penciled in. Our notes at the top there will say what students are attending and what students aren't. Again, once we have those dates, we'll make sure those are solidified on the, on the November, marking period one ends November 2nd, and that means on November 3rd, we would have a Professional Development Day. That means no students off, or, I'm sorry, no students in school that day, it's a Professional Development Day. There are some other comments in there about a half-day grading for elementary teachers, and that, you'll see that in each marking period. Veterans Day is observed on the 10th, and then on the 20th and 21st, those are our conferences. If you notice, this is a slight change from years, the years past. This, these conferences are pre-K to 12. We got some feedback from high school teachers, high school administrators, as well as some family members, saying that we used to have our high school students attending on that day, on those two days. It turned out to be low attendance. We heard some feedback about, you know, some of the older kids having to watch some of the, the younger kids. We decided to move the conferences on those two days. So that means all of our students pre-K to 12 would be off those two days, as well as the rest of the week.
So I guess the whole Thanksgiving is off?
Right. Yep.
If we adopt this strategy.
If we adopt it, yes, yeah. And, and as we discussed there, obviously, when we, when we make those two conference days and we, we have to find other days somewhere, right? So we're, we're using those two days for high school somewhere else, but yeah, they would have that off. Okay, December, really only thing to point out there for December is the December 22nd, that would be the first day of winter break. That is similar to what it looks like this year for our calendar. You can flip ahead to January. You see January 1st falls on a Monday, so we would still have that off. Schools would reopen on January 2nd, which is Tuesday. Martin Luther King falls on a, on the 15th, which is a Monday. Schools and offices would be closed there. And then on the 25th, you see the marking period two ends. So on the 26th, this would be a pre-K to 12 Professional Learning Day, and that means all students would be off on that Friday. Looking ahead to February, February, we have conferences for pre-K to eight on the 14th, as well as the 15th. Students would be in school on the 14th, but on the 15th, pre-K to eight students would be off. Those are, that's a full day and evening conference. And then on the 16th, you would have, all students would be off on that day. Again, that's the same as what our schedule looks like this year. That leads into a longer weekend because President's Day is on Monday, the 19th, and schools and offices are closed. March, just a couple of pieces to point out here in March. One, we got some feedback from the high schools that we were doing evening conferences in February, but they felt that the February timeframe was a little early for them, so they wanted to bump it back a couple of weeks. So those evening conferences would be March 6th and 7th. There's still evening conferences, so there's not a ton of change, it's just we bumped it back a couple of weeks. And then you're going to see that March 27th is the end of the marking, oh, end of the third marking period, which means the 28th is another Professional Development Day. And this year, spring break falls early, so the 29th is Good Friday, which means schools and offices are closed. Again, just one more piece to highlight there, we don't have the SAT dates, so once we do, we'll, we'll put them on the calendar. So, nothing to report in April, other than we would return from our spring break on Monday, the 8th. Again, once we have our dates for PSAT, SAT, and AP exams, they will be listed on the calendar. May 24th, schools and offices, I'm sorry, schools would be closed, offices open, that's in lieu of the conferences, and that backs up to the Memorial Day, Monday, being off, all schools and offices closed. June, lots to kind of report here. So last day of school for our seniors would be June 5th. June 8th would be our graduation. This will be the 23, 24 school year, is the first year for Odessa High to have a graduating class. So all three high schools would be graduating on the 8th. Our last day of pre-K would be the 10th. Our last day of school for all other students, K to 11, would be on the 12th, and our last teacher day would be the 14th. Now typically, we do look ahead a little bit, so I'm going to kind of quickly go through the next few months.
Before, before you do, the last day for seniors is June 5th, but you've got high school exams the week after that, so they must take their exams before the 5th, right?
Yes, typically, they, they are finished several days earlier before our, the rest of our...
So what do you do with classes where you've got juniors and seniors? Your pardon?
It's just the juniors there, then.
Well, I, I presume that, I just find it odd, but... So if you're a senior, you take your exams obviously before the 5th, but if you're otherwise, you take them starting the 10th?
Could be.
Okay.
Okay, a couple things...
Oh, one other. So years ago, eight or nine years ago now, I've been on this board too long, we had a lot of snow. I mean, a lot of snow, and we had a lot of snow days, to the point where we had a choice, we could either extend the school day like 20 minutes for two months, or we could extend the school year for like five days. And the board voted four to one to extend the school day, rather than extend the school year.
I, I won't ask who voted what, but go ahead.
Yeah. I'm still bitter, all these years later. But I'll tell you what, I was really popular with the kids at the time.
This is the reason I ran for school board.
Anyway, what are we doing now? Going forward, having learned from that lesson, we did build in some extra time into the school year, because we were to the point where the highs, the seniors weren't necessarily going to have enough time if we didn't do something to actually qualify for graduation. So what is our plan? Do we, how much extra time do we have built in?
This is why the first snow day is a real snow day and all other snow days are virtual snow days.
Well, do people realize that? Because I know we were never asked to vote on that policy, and I'm not sure how effective it is. It really hasn't been put to the test yet, I don't think. And I'm, I'm concerned about it.
We did, we did use that the last two years. I think we used more than one snow day, so we have, we have used it.
Well, two years ago, we were in COVID, so I mean, it would have been a snow day regardless.
But yeah, I mean, Ms. Wall took, took my answer. That's what we have done in the last few years, that as of right now, would be the plan, but...
And what kind of attendance, and what kind of attendance, and how effective is it? Because, you know, obviously during COVID, we had to do it, but now, kids are used to going back to school every day. And how easy and quick is it going to be for them to suddenly go to a virtual schedule for like one day in the middle of March? for like one day in the middle of March, when they haven't done it in a year? And are teachers ready to do that? And are we going to be able to have all the classes and get all the minutes in, if that's what we're going to do?
I mean, my answer is yes. I mean, I obviously can't speak to every single person, but I would say that I think it went over pretty well with our teachers, our students, and our families the last, you know, last couple of years, or whatever it has been. But I don't know if anybody else wants to speak to that specifically.
We had to put it in practice last year, as Nick said. It was well received. Now, we do have a contention that wants to just give, wants a snow day every day with no virtual learning, but on the backside of it, you have to make it up. I would argue that it's more effective than adding days in the middle of June to the calendar and what's going to happen with kids in the classrooms at that point. And I think to your, I remember that vote and that discussion. Kit, you were popular to kids right then, but I don't think on June 18th, you would have been too popular to kids. So.
Look, if we're going to do it, and this is going to be the policy going forward, we need to be fairly ruthless about it. And by that, I mean, you got to show up, or you get counted absent, and all that sort of stuff. And people really need to appreciate and understand that's the way it's going to be.
I would say being a principal last year, I mean, that was the expectation. We are taking attendance. We are, you know, meeting with students, putting work out. We are expecting that work to come back. So, I mean, we did set the expectation. Honestly, I think that our world is a little bit easier now to handle that versus, you know, even pre-COVID. So I think it's a good policy, and I think it's something that's going to work moving forward. Okay, last couple of things just to point out. Juneteenth, June 19th, that's a day off. And so that will be Wednesday in June. July 4th is a Thursday. That's a day off. We are proposing that in August of 2024, because we usually do present a little bit of the beginning of next year. August 19th would be when new teachers return. The 26th, when all staff return for our opening day. And then you can see there, in September, our first days of school would be the 3rd, 4th, and 5th. Any questions?
Public comment is open until next presentation?
Yeah, I was going to get to that. So, no, no, that's fine. I was just waiting for any other questions. Yeah, so we are going to open this up to public comment. There's two ways the public will be able to comment. There's a link as well as a QR code. Both of them go to the same form, so it doesn't matter which one people choose. We'll make sure we get this out. This will be opened up for comment. We'll receive the comments. And then, again, our committee will meet, discuss the comments, feedback, all that kind of stuff, consider whatever people comment on, and then come back again in January.
I know in years past, we've had some years where we've given the Jewish holidays as holidays, and some years we haven't. We've been inconsistent in that, and we get that question. Can you just make sure that it's something that the committee talks about?
Absolutely. We'll bring it back up in January.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have tabled the next agenda item for January, and we'll move on to the construction update. Mr. Hopkins.
So, in favor of canceling events on the weekend? Just in practice or anything like that? I mean, I know we haven't discussed it, but.
All right, Crystal Run. All right, Crystal Run's moving along pretty well. As you can see in the front, the masonry is going. Actually, we'll start with the roof. The roof is completed across all three areas of the front, A, B, and C. It's moving on to the D section. There's an area here where the mechanical space is. They'll start there, go to this space, and across the top, it'll be watertight end of January, roughly in that timeframe. As you come across the front, you can see all the masonry started here. They're jumping across. Anything you see in yellow is spray foam. So they're going to jump across to this area to get this going, to get the windows closed in, to keep us rolling in front of the weather. And they're going to move into this area here after that. Back in the back, this is Crystal Run. The sewer line and the water lines, all comm lines are running across to the maintenance building in the back and the pump station. Right now, I think the electrics, anything, has to go across, that and comms. Parking lot is getting completed here. They're going to try to get that base paved in as we're moving forward. Right now, all the mechanical screens are up. This is all done. They're going to start setting the equipment, I think, next week. Here, here, and here.
Is that Rothwell Estates over there?
Yes.
Is similar to the Fairview campus. Is there going to be a walkway planned for the kids to walk over to the campus?
Not at this time. We don't have that. There's not a good way across Crystal Run.
Okay.
You know, there's one little pipe section here that was with the existing farm, but right now, we don't have that in. I think that's in the next phase, was a bridge across that area. Good, Steve. This is the main entrance coming out towards Summit. This is coming out to the road. All the road renovations are going on now. This has been cut in. The paving's down, and the curb's been put in. The right lane is coming and making a left into there, and this is the left lane into this way here. Lights won't be put up for some time yet, but they're all set for it. And the construction in the middle of it is just, should be complete now. This area here is all curbed out. The base paving's down and heading out that way. We're going to base pave this way. Good, Steve. This is back of the area D. You're seeing your art, band, and rooms of this coming down area D. They're all getting set for the spray foam as they're coming around, and then the masonry will follow. This is the interior. They're getting ready for paint. They should be starting paint this week. This is area B. Then they'll start the ceilings in behind that, drop lights, come along with the wall tile here and here, and just come around. This is a commons area. You can see the mechanical spaces are in insulated. Area A, all the metal studs are up. They're starting to rough in all the mechanicals now. And we'll move right into drywall from there. It's moving pretty good. Good, Steve. This is area D. You're looking back at your stage here. This side goes up. You have a cafeteria over here. Mechanical spaces, back of house, gym, storage here. On this side will be your band, art, and things of that nature on that side. This roofing will be the last area that gets roofed in the building. This is some of the roadwork. This is all completed now. This is a ways back. This curb is in, and the pavement's coming around. Then we'll open this back up the traffic, so we're not holding anything up. That's the basic for Crystal Run. The softball field is pretty well underway. It's got all the fencing around it. The dugouts have been ordered. We're not there yet, but we're getting close. The lights that we're going to talk about here for the change orders for the Middletown High School, they're starting now. We're just moving through some middle process. The same thing is going to happen for Cavalier Stadium. You'll see the change order for that when it comes in, probably next month. We're trying to get lights out there for both of them, and then Appalo High, somewhere in first of next year. Any questions? We are. It's going to be tight, but we are. The weather pushed us back some, but we're, I'm not going to give good news until I have it, and I'm going to wait to get through the winter to give it. So right now, we're on schedule where we were before. And it is on budget.
On budget. I'll let you ask that.
Yeah, we're actually under budget. We're doing well.
That's usually Mr. Forston's next question.
All the projects are on budget.
Good. Thank you. Any further questions?
No.
Moving on, board comments. Ms. Wright.
Just a quick congratulations again to all the student teams that we saw tonight. And other than that, I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season.
Mr. Abrams.
You know, often people ask, what do you get for serving on the Board of Education? Aside from the big salary we receive, tonight is a perfect example of what we, the board, get. Seriously, there is no pay. But, you know, as I approach my 14th year here at the board, it never ceases to amaze me what our students are capable of. And I know we have excellent leadership from the top to the bottom that inspire our teachers and students to be the best they can be. Hope you all have a nice holiday and see you next year.
Thank you. Mr. Forston.
It was indeed great to see all the students here. And I understand that, you know, they want to get home. I'm sure they're going to rush home and work on homework and stuff like that. But it's a shame that they don't stick around, because they don't get to hear us sing their praises further, although maybe they've tuned in now that we're on the internet. But, you know, congratulations to the band. Congratulations to the YO program. FFA, I've been saying for years, I really like their jackets, and nobody has taken the hint yet.
There's this thing called the Blue Jacket Bonanza every year. Maybe you should apply. Like, it's a letter you write, a paragraph about why you deserve one.
And then I'll just say, you know life is good when you're the goalie on a team, and no one has taken a shot on you all season. It really doesn't get any better than that when you're the goalie. But congratulations to the Odessa Girls' Field Hockey Team. That was a great record. And so with that, I will simply say, everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I look forward to seeing you all in January. Thank you.
I will echo all the comments. Congratulations to everyone that we recognized tonight. Congratulations to those students who finished fall sports and are moving into winter sports, and as we move into winter, band activities. And I know that all of the casting and auditioning is happening for all of our musical productions at all of our high schools and middle schools, so stay tuned for events and announcements about those things. It's always great to see kids, their confidence on stage. Monday, we'll be having Bagels with a board member. It's a little bit of a date switch, but I hope to see you there. It'll be 8:30 at Manhattan Bagel on the 19th. I think that's Monday's date. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, happy every, all the holidays to everyone. I look forward to seeing you in the new year. Mr. Witt, do you have comments from there? Is your connection okay?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. I'm glad that you're at least able to join us. Moving on, there's nothing under old business. Moving on to new business. I have the November 1st, 2022 Board of Education meeting minutes.
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we approve the November Board of Education meeting minutes as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Forston, a second by Mr. Abrams, to approve the November Board of Education meeting minutes as presented. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item, the monthly financial report. Mr. Loftus.
Financial Advisory Committee met on November 29th to review the October revenue and expenditure report. And they recommended approval of that report.
Madam President, I'll make a motion that we approve the monthly financial report for October as presented and as recommended by the Financial Advisory Committee. And of course, as always, thank the board, the Financial Advisory Committee, for its hard work, because they just don't get the recognition they should.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Forston, a second by Mr. Abrams, to approve the monthly financial report, as it's already been approved by the Financial Advisory Committee. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the Internal Accounts Report. Mr. Loftus.
Financial Advisory Committee also reviewed the October Internal Accounts Report and recommended approval of that report.
Madam President, I'll make a motion. We approve the Internal Accounts Report as presented and as recommended by the Financial Advisory Committee.
Second.
There's a motion to approve the Internal Accounts Report by Mr. Forston, a second by Mr. Abrams. It's already been recommended by the Financial Advisory Committee. Any questions, comments, or concerns on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And thank you to the Financial Advisory Committee for your time. The next item on the agenda, the design documents for bid phase two of Lewis L. Redding Middle School. Mr. Hopkins. And team.
And team. Yeah, we're here for bid phase two. Last month, we did bid phase one for the Lewis Redding project. This is the next phase in that project. This would be all the remaining contracts and the remainder of the building.
Okay.
Here we have ABHA and BSA.
Great. Thanks for coming.
Good evening. So just as a reminder, this is the overall project schedule. And we're in the design phase right now, so see, we're targeting going to bid early in 2023, with construction starting in the spring for an opening in summer of 2025. And then after that, would follow with the demolition of the existing Redding School and reconstruction of the fields. Moving to the next slide. This is just a summary again. We were here last month for bid phase one for design development. This is bid phase two. Bid phase one, we had to get a jump on that in order to get ahead for bidding of that early in 2023, so that work can start as the site work, concrete and steel packages. Bid phase two is really just the rest of the building, so we're going to look into a bit on detail of that today. Next slide. And then again, the dates. Today, we're looking at bid phase two DD. We'll be back again in January for bid phase one for the CD approval of that, and then in March for bid phase two. Just an overview of the site again. This is the existing building with bus parking in the front. As we talked about last month, the new building is going to be in the field in front of that bus parking lot. And if we jump to the next slide.
I just had a quick question.
I'm sure.
On the construction design approvals, we've got January 10th, 2023, for bid phase one, and then March 14th, 2023, for bid phase two. So are we going to do two sets of bids, one for the first? Okay, I just want to make sure. And that'll allow us to start construction on the phase one documents, even while we're fiddling around with.
Roughly equal, so we can get the bus lots in, and we'll loop around the back, be ready for.
Okay. Thank you.
Sophie, actually, jump to the next one. We can kind of give an overview of, this is the completed site project. So you can see we're in front of the existing Redding School. In the front is the visitor parking and parent drop-off coming in from New Street. To the left side is that bus parking lot, which would be part of that initial phase of work. And in the rear of the building is the, on the left side would be the kind of the event parking, and to the right side is the staff and community parking. Also in the back is the outdoor classroom and courtyard, which is all on access to the original entrance to the Redding School, which is the kind of an outdoor classroom artifact. If we go to the next slide, this is just an overall plan of the first floor. Again, with the main axis on the original entrance, we have the admin and admin spaces on the first floor. On the right side is the sixth-grade pod. On the left side is related arts pod. And again, on the right side would be the gymnasium spaces with that entrance. The way we've got it set up is that you can close off each end of the building from the academic core, so that events can happen after hours. On the left side is the auditorium space. The purple is the music spaces. And then the center yellow area is kind of the lobby and cafeteria space, which is fed from the kitchen. On the second floor, which is next slide, you can see the seventh and eighth grade pods, which are on each side. And the center section would be the media center and the art room and a center lobby space. And then on the left side, it kind of opens up with a learning stair similar to that at Meredith, where we have a learning stair that goes down into that cafeteria lobby space. Next slide.
So this is just a little bit more of a blow up of, after you see all the parts and pieces coming together. This is the first floor, central academic core. So as Scott had said, that main entrance is in the middle there with the yellow. And that's a secure entry with administration nurse to either side of that. There's a straight access through, as we said, that's a connection to that outdoor classroom area and to the fields behind the building. To the right is the sixth-grade pod, and to the left is the related arts pod. And you'll see in each of those areas, there's a central kind of bright green, or bright blue, sorry. And you'll see in each of those areas, there's a central kind of bright green or bright blue, sorry, a learning common. So each one of the pods would have a shared collaborative space to share and cluster between each of the classrooms and science labs in each of those areas. Also central to that plan, you see those pink areas. We have a lot of student support services that are clustered at the beginning of each pod to be able to connect with the students. On the next slide, you can see in going through to the, through that sixth grade pod, again, to that gym wing and some of the multipurpose and flex space. And as Scott had said, we've designed it so that you can secure that area. So for after-hours events, you don't need to, you don't have access through the main building, so you can keep that secure for different hours of events. And the next slide, kind of shift into the left and going through.
Can we go back to the previous slide real quick? So there, so are there two different bathrooms for each set of lockers? Am I looking at that correctly?
Yes, there are. Yep.
And is that a shower in the one? Or what is that thing with the kind of like a K?
Yes.
What is that?
Yeah, there are showers and toilet facilities for each locker room.
All right.
In that space, yep. So going on to the other side is the other end of the building, again, going through that related arts pod. As Scott had said, this is kind of another public area that can be closed off from the academic and related arts core for after-hours. That brownish color is the auditorium, and you see the purple classrooms are all of the supporting band and chorus spaces that are directly adjacent to the theater, which is a big improvement from the location as it is, the existing current Redding. The area, the cafeteria, that's in yellow, you know, that's connected to the kitchen, but it's also intended to be able to overflow for any events. So when you have, you know, a theater or anything going in the auditorium, there's an area outside to be able to kind of spill out and collaborate in there as well. Now, the next slide, moving up to the second floor. And again, as this is organized in pods, to the right is a seventh grade pod, to the left is the eighth grade pod. Again, each of those have a cluster of classrooms and science labs around collaborative commons area. And in the center is support spaces that is more central to the building with the media center to that kind of bottom in the brown, and the art to the top that overlooks the fields to the back of the building, and another collaborative space. And again, you can see the pink areas. Those are the student services clustered, you know, at the beginning of each of those pods, so that, again, those individuals are really start connecting to each of the grade levels as well. On the next slide, you know, just again, recognizing the importance, the history of Lewis L. Redding. We've been talking over these last several months in design of how that could be integrated into the building and reflected as we move forward to be able to showcase and highlight the history of Redding. On the next slide, we just wanted to share, we're still in progress, but you see these areas or these zones that are highlighted as potential spaces that we see could get a lot of public view and can get a lot of visibility throughout the building. So that main entry and connection through, again, really strong here because it connects to that area that is the outdoor classroom that Scott had talked about, and that's really preserving and identifying, marking the existing entry of Redding. So connecting that with that main access is a nice feature. And then in the gym lobby, as we talked about, and then again, in the auditorium and cafeteria lobby, being public spaces, and that could get a lot of visibility even after hours. Those are areas that we're looking at as well. So we've been collecting a lot of information and data on Redding, and we're engaging and working with the alumni as well, so they've been a part of the process. So it's still evolving. So just want to share some, on the next slide, some renderings.
So this is a view looking from New Street towards the school, and you can kind of appreciate the length of it. The center access again is that spine that leads on access through the original entrance. And if we go to the next slide, you can kind of see a closer up view of that. The way the new building references the original design of the Redding, but kind of modernized. And then it also brings in that access with some clear story windows that feed into that art room, that library space, and that center lobby. If we go to the next slide, you can see the view from kind of from the visitor parking area looking towards the building. And then the next, this, again, we've talked about this before, that the building really doesn't have a back. So it's two different faces. So this is the face that looks at the community parking area and the gym entrance. So you can see that arrangement. And then to the right would be the kind of the outdoor classroom space. And from the left side, this is coming in for events for the auditorium. All of this that you're seeing is that brown is that brick and some cast stone elements on it as far as materials. The next slide is a view of the kind of the artifact, the reconstructed Redding School entrance and the outdoor classroom piece. That would be part of that courtyard. And that's it for tonight. Any questions?
Yeah, the two long hallways in the classroom areas, how wide are they?
I believe it's eight. Is it nine feet?
Nine feet. How wide are the hallways at the new Meredith School? Seven feet. Okay. Okay, okay. Okay, great. Yeah, that was my question too. Thank you.
Just a little history on that, Kelly. We got to a point where he had to value engineer at Meredith, and one of the things that we value engineered is the corridors for the hallways. So that's why you see that. And I've made that observation myself as well, so. And they get tired of me asking how wide the hallways are at a.
Yeah, that was, that was my question. Are we learning from what we've done before to make things better? And seeing class changes at a middle school and those kids, you know, I was just thinking about that a little bit. So that's great. Thank you.
So are we being asked to approve?
We are.
The plans that you just showed us, is that?
Yes, as submitted in your packet, yes.
All right, Madam President, I'll make a motion that we approve the design development fee, design documents for bid phase two of Lewis L. Redding Middle School as presented, with the nine-foot-wide corridors, of course.
There's a motion by Mr. Forston, a second by Mr. Abrams to approve the design documents for bid phase two of Lewis L. Redding Middle School as presented. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Hopkins, construction contracts and change orders are your next. Change orders.
Change orders for who? We'll start with Crystal Run. Crystal Run, you're going to see about $248,000 transfer funds. What that is is just transferred on the balance sheet. That's the number impact fee that VDI has paid for, including the light bulbs, things like that. That's on one side of the ledger, the other. Middletown High School roof, you're going to see the softball field lighting, they call them out. But it really is the softball, but it's the practice field lighting. That's the change order for that work.
Is that new lighting that we're putting up or are we replacing existing lighting?
At Middletown High School right now, they have four temporary ones out there. Put extras out because of the band goods. So it's lighting that they like to fill up. They use it all the time now. We have temporaries out there. It's through the town. Everybody's on board. And San Antonio. The next one's going to be Brickmo, Richfield Center. You're going to see a $75,000 credit there. That's reimbursable fees back, some third-party testing and a number of requirements, so that comes back to us. Meredith. Meredith is quite a bit. Job's closing out. You're going to see a lot of things coming together towards the end. We have some owner requested change orders there. Nothing too massive. There was an irrigation system for a field out in the middle so they could have the field immediately and play on it out there in that circle between the fieldhouse and the back of the school. Also, there's about $60,000 of field conditions in there. The change order comes over time. Various things that happen to close the building up and get in. $30,000 out there, credits that are coming back, plus from allowances. You have about $8,000 in back charges that are coming our way. That we drew them all and recommended for approval.
And with these change orders, we're still on budget, correct? Madam President, I'll make a motion that we approve the change orders as presented and as recommended by Mr. Hopkins.
Second.
There is a motion by Mr. Forston, a second by Mr. Abrams to approve the change orders as presented. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Moving on in the agenda, the personnel report for approval. Mr. Banks. Hello, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dominique Banks, HR supervisor here in the district. Before you is the personnel report for the month of December. We're asking for your approval in addition to the candidate selected during the executive session.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented with the addition of our interview candidate's name from earlier.
I have a motion for Mr. Abrams, a second for Mr. Forston to approve the personnel report for December as presented and to include the name from executive session. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, the administrative contract renewals and extensions.
Yes, so here we are in December, the month of December. We're asking for the approval and the recognition of the administrative contracts for the next school year. Seeking your approval.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the administrative contract renewals and extension for 2023, 2024 for approval as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Abrams, a second by Mr. Forston to approve the administrative contract renewals and extensions for the 2023, 2024 school years. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your approvals.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you. The next agenda item is the establishment of the next meeting dates. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be Tuesday, January 10th, 2023, here at 7 o'clock in this boardroom. So everyone has a Happy New Year, and we'll see you then. Thank you.